Welcome to the Sunset Park Podcast. I'm your host, Rob Aguilar. I hope that you are having a great week, that you had a great weekend. And before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone that you might have heard in the news that COVID numbers are on the rise in Sunset Park. So I'd like to remind everyone to please take precautions. Please wear your masks when you're out and about. We cannot get too comfortable. If we do all these things that the experts say we should do, I know that going back to what we were used to before won't be that far away. So let's just take precautions. Let's be safe. I know there's still a lot of great weather left and we want to be out there enjoying it. But it's very important that we wear our masks, that we keep the right amount of social distance, and that we stay safe. So today, we have Rodrigo Camarena joining us. He is a longtime community activist, and he is now running for city council in the 38th district. We're going to bring him on to talk about his vision for the district. We're also going to get to learn a little bit more about him in case you don't know him and you see him out and about in the neighborhood. So let's bring on Rodrigo. Rodrigo, welcome to the podcast.
Hey, Rob. Thanks for having me. How are you?
We're good. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us. So Rodrigo, let's dig right in.
How are you doing?
You've been doing a lot.
Thanks for the time. Monday.
Great.
No, is it slowed down?
It slowed down a little bit, yeah.
Can you hear me okay, Rob?
I can hear you now. I think we're good. Great, Rodrigo. So you've been doing a lot of work for a very long time in Sunset Park. How long have you been working in the community?
Yeah, I've been around for a long time. You know, I'm originally from Mexico City. I was born there. I was raised between Mexico and the US and came to New York as a college student. So back in 2002. In my junior year of studying, I came to Sunset Park to volunteer at the Mixteca organization. I taught English, I taught mixed history classes, and really fell in love from that point forward. I started volunteering. I became executive director of Mixteca, served as executive director for a number of years. I'm now the board chair and have been working and organizing in Sunset Park since then.
So it's over 20 something years now, you would say? Is that right around 20 something years now?
It's a little bit over 15, yeah. I'm not that old, but I'm getting there.
I'm that old, yeah, yeah. So how did you?
The gray hair kind of, you know, makes it like a hairhound forever.
So how did that start for you? How did you find Mixteca? How did you find your way there?
I was volunteering at the law school at an institution or clinic that was called the Center for Community Problem Solving. And what we were doing is we were going around New York City and writing a reentry guide for folks that were leaving jails and prisons and needed to find community spaces. So we were interviewing nonprofits around the city, talking to them about their reentry services for folks coming out of jails and prisons. And at that point in time, you know, it wasn't easy to Google this. So the guide was actually produced for both English and Spanish speakers. And I had the opportunity of interviewing Mixteca's founder, Dr. R. Ringón, learned a lot about his mission and his project. And I remember him telling me that, you know, "I'm not here to give you information. I want you to give us something." He always looked out for his community and wanted to make sure that academic institutions, especially weren't just taking away knowledge. So I said, "I'm in. I'm going to come and volunteer with you." And actually, my wife started volunteering, my now-wife started volunteering with Mixteca first and brought me along. And I told Dr. Ringón I was going to help out. And, you know, 15 years later, I'm still helping out at Mixteca, maybe looking to move on soon. But I'm really honored to have had the experience that Mixteca and Dr. Ringón gave me. This year, we celebrated 20 years in this community. And I'm proud and honored to have been involved for the last 15 years.
That's a great story. I actually, I don't know if you remember this, but I actually remember the first day that you came into Mixteca. And I was there with Anna, who's, she's my wife now, she wasn't my wife then. And they were doing the English program. And I think you and maybe a few other people from NYU might have dropped in. And it was really nice at that time to see young people getting involved in the community and helping out. Yeah, Gabriel Ringón, I remember when we first started, it was just a few of us in a really small... Well, we actually started at his office first, and then we found the space. But I remember, I remember that day clearly. And I never imagined when I saw you there that day that this would have gone as long as it did and that you would eventually be such an important part of Mixteca.
Thanks. I don't think I imagined it either. I really, I think, found my community at Mixteca and in Sunset Park. I moved around a lot as a kid and, you know, didn't really ever feel like I fit in. But when I came to Sunset Park, when I got to know the volunteers and the organizers at Mixteca and beyond, I think I really found my people, I really found the community that I felt was home to me. And so, you know, part of my work with Mixteca is also a way of finding my people and my identity. And I've been really fortunate to have had that experience.
So now, you said you grew up in Mexico City. What was that like growing up in Mexico City and then making the move to the US or to New York? I know that there's a lot of similarities with Mexico City and New York. Did you feel at home right away? Was it different? What did you like? What didn't you like?
Yeah, you know, my childhood was all over the place. So I was born in Mexico City. I first moved from Mexico City at around age four. I came to Northern Virginia. Was also, you know, it was a community that I grew up in wasn't very diverse. And I remember just feeling, you know, those first effects of coming to the US and seeing how things were, you know, much more sterilized it seemed, or just felt colder. I remember it feeling very different from Mexico City, which is a really rambunctious, dynamic, colorful city. And so when I moved to New York, I moved back to Mexico and lived in Virginia as a child. So when I came back to New York, I really felt that connection to my hometown or, you know, the city that I grew up in. And seeing the diversity, seeing the colors, seeing the movement in the streets, the people engaging. And I think Brooklyn especially shows a lot of that flavor and a lot of that diversity. And Sunset Park in particular, and with all the communities that live here, with the way that we all help each other out, look out for each other, talk to each other on the street. I think it's very similar to the warm culture that I, you know, grew up with in Mexico City.
Yeah, Sunset Park definitely has a feel of like a small town, right? Like, I feel everyone kind of knows everyone and it has a very small-town feel to it. I think it's our own town, if you will, where, you know, once you live here for such a long time, you can't take that away, right? Your experiences here help shape who you become. And then when you go out into the world, I almost feel like you have an upper hand when you're competing for different things outside of Sunset Park. So all those years of doing community work, of working with Mixteca and working on other different projects, did you always have in mind that you were going to run for city council? How does that idea come about?
Yeah, you know, I wish I could say that it was my intention all along, but obviously that would be a lot of foresight. The idea really came about when we started seeing the threats of this community changing drastically. So, you know, like you said, Sunset Park feels like a small town. It feels like everywhere and kind of nowhere at the same time. It could be its own global city, and I think in many ways it is. And when, to be honest with you, when the threats of the Industry City project growing and attracting, you know, a different kind of resident and attracting a different kind of business, I think the alarm bells really went off in my head. And the need to do more than I was doing at that point, and the idea of running for office, I think, really started to become more serious, mostly because I feel like as a community, we have so much to offer in terms of how we develop, how we grow, how we look out for one another. And the project that is being proposed on the waterfront isn't for us, and it's not by us. It's by an outside conglomerate investment group that essentially wants to mollify this part of South Brooklyn. And so, you know, that's not right. That's not what I think the majority of residents of this community want. And I really think we can do much better in that as council member, I want us to plan as a community for what that better vision looks like. And there's a lot of great proposals out there that talk about that. So I think the Industry City threats were really the catalyst for me becoming more serious about thinking of running for office.
So let's talk about Industry City. A lot of people are against it, but there's also a group of people, longtime Sunset Park residents, who are for it and support it. And they say that those that are against Industry City are anti-development, right? That because Industry City is here, it's going to increase the value of property for those existing homeowners. And there's interesting enough, people that are for it. Why is Industry City, or why does Industry City pose a problem for Sunset Park? And why should they be controlled or modified? Or maybe we should watch them more carefully with what they propose and what they want to do?
That's a great question. You know, I don't have any beef or... I feel for people that think that the project is going to benefit them and benefit the community. You know, especially now, we are in an economic crisis. There is a jobs crisis. There is an affordability crisis that has been longstanding. I understand the promise and the hope of jobs suddenly arriving on the waterfront being attractive. I think there's a lot of problems with that promise and with that expectation that they've set. And I also understand that people like to go there, they like to enjoy the outdoor concerts. I would say that all of these promises and all of these events that are there to entertain us are really ruses, or they're essentially ways of fooling us into opening the door to way more than we, I think, had hoped for. And we've seen this strategy across the country. We've seen it throughout New York City, where a developer comes in and they say, "Hey, I'm going to make this area better. I'm going to clean it up," whatever that means. "I'm going to bring jobs. I'm going to bring income." And the truth of the matter is that, sure, they bring in jobs, they bring in income, but the people that were supposed to enjoy those jobs and income can't live in the community anymore. They've moved out. They live in New Jersey. They live further out in Long Island, Tricee area, or they just went back home in the event that they, you know, were immigrants and came here for a period of time. So I think we don't... The people that are looking at the Industry City project in a hopeful way, I can't blame. I would just ask them to look at the history of developments, like the one that they're proposing, to look at what Williamsburg looks like today, to look at what Chelsea looks like today, versus what it was 20, 30 years ago. Another Jamestown project. So, you know, I think we all need to know our history. We need to know and look carefully at the proposal and where are these jobs coming from that they're promising? How much are they paying? By when are we supposed to have these jobs? So ask a lot of questions and look at the history. You know, I've certainly done that, and I think that's what pushed me to be a vocal opponent of the project. So I would encourage others to do the same.
Now, what can be done at the city council level to, let's say, slow down some of these very aggressive plans that Industry City wants to bring about to the community?
Sure. And, you know, again, I'm speaking only as an individual, but the truth is that there's a long history of what I would call racist rezonings, rezonings that don't take into consideration the demographic makeup of the communities that they want to upzone or change through land use. We really need to look carefully at how we approve and look at proposals to use what is our land at the end of the day. Even if they've bought the parcel, we're impacted by what they do there. So the city council, in my view, needs to overhaul how it decides land use. We need to think long-term. We need to think strategically about the needs of all communities throughout New York City, and then make a decision about what projects that are privately financed we allow to come into our communities. And the problem is that we haven't done that. We haven't had the chance to. We haven't sat down and thought carefully around the needs for housing, around the needs for green spaces, around the needs for schools. And we should have that conversation. We should have it with our peers around the city. And we should think about what, you know, what our land use decisions mean for the makeup of our city, who gets to live here, who doesn't get to live here, and what we want to see for ourselves in the future.
A lot of the things that Industry City puts out there through their marketing are things like jobs, right? That's their big pitch. They're going to bring jobs, 20-something thousand jobs, and I don't know how many other thousands of jobs they've already brought or created. It seems that we could never get a clear number on those jobs that are supposedly already created, right? We don't know if those jobs really come into the community. But you mentioned some very interesting things that the community needs, right? We need better housing. We need affordable housing, real affordable housing. We need green spaces. We need schools, yes. So can we get those things without Industry City, right? Because part of their marketing is also that they're either going to help with that or can help with all those things. But can we obtain all these things the community needs without Industry City, without relying on Industry City, like they say that they're going to help bring some way, somehow, to the community?
Absolutely, absolutely, we can. And we've done it many times before. You know, a private developer didn't come in and say, "I'm going to build Central Park," or "I'm going to build Prospect Park," or "I'm going to build, you know, the great network of libraries that we have now in schools and roads." So I think over time, the city has forgotten the role of the public sector and the power of government to do big things, like build large waterfront parks on the public expense, build schools and affordable and public housing. You know, we used to have a great public housing infrastructure. It was a path to the middle class for a lot of families, and we've neglected that intentionally because we've, you know, elected leaders have essentially wanted to privatize and slowly erode what should be public goods and public assets. So I think we need to, again, look at our history and look at what the city has done, what we've done as New Yorkers, and stop thinking that we need some private foreign capital project to get the things that we all pay taxes to supposedly get. So this is going to require some deprogramming amongst our city council members and frankly, whoever is mayor next, because this model of bringing in private equity groups and private developers to do things that we could and have done traditionally as the public really needs to change.
So housing is another big issue that the community faces, right? Where people are priced out and there just isn't enough housing. Have you thought about ways to handle this housing crisis that is affecting the community?
Definitely. And I just want to be clear that right now, we are seeing the effects of a longstanding housing and affordability crisis. You know, you've seen the headlines, but almost an estimated 50% of New Yorkers won't be able to pay rent next month. The eviction courts are going to be at capacity if we don't cancel rent or extend the eviction moratorium beyond the end of the state of emergency. So I just want to preface everything that I'm going to say with saying that, one, we've been in crisis before COVID hit, and two, we need to deal with the immediate emergency while we think about how we tackle the long-term structural issues that have gotten us here to begin with. So in terms of the long-term structural issues that we need to address, again, it goes back to really understanding housing as a human right, understanding housing as something that isn't optional. You know, we all need a place to live, just like we all need an education and we all need healthcare. I think having that premise in mind helps open your mind to the real, I think, solutions to addressing our housing and affordability crisis, which is that we need to fully fund and invest in our public housing infrastructure. We can build large public housing developments. We can build medium-sized homes for families and make that something that, you know, everyone should be proud of and want to aspire to live in. We can do things like investing in community land trusts, where, you know, neighbors can come together through an organization and say, "Hey, we want to buy this parcel of land and develop it to co-ops or affordable housing for this neighborhood." We can do things like, you know, ensure that our rent-stabilized housing units don't get privatized further. We have a really great stock of stabilized housing in the city. Almost 2 million people live in rent-stabilized units. And that's, I think, a large part of why the city is so diverse and dynamic in that, you know, we need to protect and fight for that rent-stabilized housing and think about how we extend and expand it. So those are a few ideas, and there's a lot of great bills in the state senate that try to address these issues. I also want to be very honest that we can't do many of these things unless we rethink our funding towards policing in jails, which is exorbitant, and unless we get federal support. So having strong representatives in Congress and having strong allies in the White House are really what's going to get us to housing justice for all.
These are all big, tough issues, like you just mentioned. They're very difficult to take on. And I almost feel that every time we get a new council member, the community is always very hopeful, right? But, and I think that when council members start out, they have the most or the best intentions possible. And then when you get there, you realize how difficult this is. And a lot of the things that you're talking about, we need and we've needed for a very long time. What about your experience as a community activist and life experience, right? Living in different areas that you've lived in and then being in the community for such a long time? What have you learned throughout those experiences that you feel you can do this difficult job and bring these difficult changes? That sometimes they look like it's going to be a big uphill battle, right? To bring all these things. But there's a certain element of grit that you get when you've lived for such a long time in Sunset Park. So I'd like to know about why, from your experiences, you feel that you can help bring these changes for us that we so badly need?
Sure. So for starters, you know, I've worked in government. I've worked in the apparatus that we're going to need to use to change our conditions. So I know how the city works. I worked for a long time in City Hall. I worked in the Bloomberg and De Blasio administrations. So I know how to move government to get big things done. Secondly, I've managed large organizations and large budgets my entire life, not just from, or adult life, not just working with Mixteca, but I'm now currently the head of a national immigrant advocacy network. I helped, you know, in that role, lead nationwide campaigns to defend immigrant rights and set up a line against this president. When I was in government, I created a lot of large citywide initiatives that helped entrepreneurs get the tools to launch their own businesses and be successful. So, you know, that's sort of on the professional side. I think I have a lot of experience to bring to this role. I also, you know, I have an advanced degree in economics. I'm an economist. I studied economic development. I know how societies can build wealth. I know how we tackle extreme poverty and inequality. And I really want to bring that experience and knowledge to this role. And then lastly, I think, you know, my demeanor isn't one where you don't want to work with me. I think I've had a long trajectory of bringing people together, bringing different kinds of people together, sharing a vision and getting people excited about that vision, because ultimately, that's what we need to have. We need to have vision and feel compelled and motivated to make that vision come to reality. So I'm trying to bring those experiences and those attributes to the role. And I'm really excited to just be out there and talking to people about what I see for us as a city and as a community.
Have you thought about, based on your experience, the difficulties of what the job of city council will entail? Like, what do you think will be the most difficult thing of the role of a city council member?
Yeah, you know, these are great questions. The next city council and the next mayor is going to inherit a budget that is not very well-resourced, a housing crisis that I hope will have, you know, an eviction crisis that I hope will have been tended to by then, but, you know, the damage brought on by COVID-19 will be very real. So the next city council and the next mayor are going to need to know how to handle the city in crisis. But not just think about how we put on Band-Aids on that crisis, how we deal with the crisis as it unfolds, but deal with the things that have brought us to this point of crisis. So, you know, for me, it's about not just dealing with the world as it is, but dealing with the world as we want it to be. And we have to make that vision happen at the same time, because if we only focus on the now, we're not going to deal and be able to embrace the future in the way that we need to as a city. You know, I understand how it might be difficult to have big ideas and put out bold proposals at a time when families are trying to put food on the table and stay in their homes. But I think we really need to think big and we need to think in structural ways so that we make sure that never again are we in a crisis where we can't feed our own people. Never again are we in a crisis where people are one paycheck away from losing their homes. So I'm ready to have that conversation. I've put out, you know, a lot of ideas over time on how to build that path and build that vision, and I'm going to continue to do this on the campaign. And so, you know, we're just going to have to trust each other and work with each other because clearly, the strategy and the way that we've governed to date hasn't brought us the results that we've wanted. So it's going to be hard, but I have a lot of hope.
And, yeah, I mean, hope, well, my grandmother in Spanish used to say, "La esperanza es lo último que se pierde." So I think the community is very hopeful because we need to hold on to that hope to bring the things that we need, that the community so desperately needs. So you've worked on... Um, so you've worked on, on many different projects, as you mentioned. Um, if you could pull from one of those projects, um, an accomplishment that you are most proud of, what, what would that be?
Sure. Um, you know, I, I have the honor of working on what was then one of the first municipal programs, citywide programs to help workers own and manage their own businesses. And this was a project of, um, that a lot of advocates have pushed for, especially at the, um, at the city level. And what we did over time, and obviously this is in great part due to the advocates and the work on the ground that they've been doing for years, is we built the largest worker owned city development, business development program. So, and you see a lot of these co-ops today in Sunset Park, you know, you see, you see Cepuete, the, the cleaning cooperative, which is mainly, um, made up of immigrant women that for the first time, many in their lives own a business, make decisions around their own employment. Uh, we, you know, have that, that co-op is now longstanding. It's been a model around the country. And, you know, played a very small role in helping co-ops like that develop over, over time. Uh, but I think that's the kind of thinking and that's the kind of imagination we need to have around how we build our neighborhoods, how we build our businesses, how we care for one another. We need to think in more cooperative, in a more cooperative manner and, and, and understand that a lot of what we're dealing with now is because we've been at each other in, in competition for jobs and competition for, uh, for resources. And that model of competition is not what is going to get us, uh, to all live together in, in a way that's healthy and safe and, and brings us prosperity. So I'm excited to, you know, think more about how we bring cooperation and solidarity to, to our strategy for economic development. And I was really proud of, of the co-op, uh, business development initiative that I helped, um, build.
Now, another big issue that I hear throughout the neighborhood is police, right? And how the local precincts have had a long history of being heavy-handed with local residents. And ever since all the different cases that, that we've seen, and especially with, uh, the George Floyd incident and how that created a national movement, one of the big things that we hear about, and it's, it's a catchphrase of defunding the police, right? And it almost sounds, sometimes I think when, when, when I hear the word, the phrase, defund the police, it, it sounds really bad, right? People think that that means get rid of the police and we don't need the police. Um, but I think people need to understand exactly what, what that phrase means. And I believe it means to allocate less funding for the police, right? Uh, no one is advocating for dismantling a police department. But, um, what kind of things at the city level can be done to police the police, if you will? I think we're having, um, some connections issues with, uh, Rodrigo on his end. Um, we'll try to get that sorted out right away. And we'll wait for Rodrigo to, to come back online. In the meantime, I want to thank everyone that's tuning in. I really appreciate, uh, the support and taking the time to listen to this conversation. As time goes by and we get closer to the election, we're going to bring on all the other candidates. Next week, we will have another candidate joining us next Monday. Um, we will have Alexa Aviles. So please make sure you tune in and follow us on, uh, the Sunset Park Podcast page, on the Sunset Park Podcast YouTube channel. And, uh, so you can be up to date and tune into that interview. If you have any topics or subjects or comments that you would like for us to cover, uh, please make sure and you get in touch with us and you can send us an email to the email address down below on the screen, uh, that's sunsetparkpodcast@gmail.com. We are going to give Rodrigo a couple more minutes to see if he can connect and we can continue with the conversation. Uh, so once again, thank you so much for your patience. And we are working really quickly to get Rodrigo back. And I think I have him. Rodrigo, you're back.
Hey, sorry. I don't know what happened.
Yeah, this, uh, not a problem. So we were talking about, uh, the police, right? And unfortunately, our local precinct has had a history with, uh, problems and, and being, uh, heavy-handed, uh, with, with residents of the community. So I know that a recent budget was just passed at city hall where a lot of, um, at least our, our council member was, uh, voting for less funding for the police. Um, what, what do you think of when you hear defund the police? Like, what's your stance on that? I know it, for some people it sounds, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound right. It doesn't click with people, right? Defund the police sounds really drastic. Uh, what do you, what is your stance on that?
Hey, that's a great question. You know, I, I think you're right. I think when people hear defund the NYPD, defund the police, uh, some might get turned off and, and, and not feel excited about that idea. But if we said fully fund schools, fully fund housing, healthcare for all, you would see a lot of, a lot of praise and, and, uh, I think excitement about those things. So I think the defund the NYPD campaign, uh, was and is a very positive development in our country and in our city. Um, you know, I was using that phrase before the killing of George Floyd. And I, I feel strongly that as a society, we should strive to not live in a city in a, in a country where we put each other behind, uh, behind bars. Um, I don't, you know, I might have to remind people that we put more people behind jail than any other country in the world. We actually have the largest, uh, prisoner population in the world. We put more of the world's women behind prison. Almost a third of the world's women are, are in US jails. Um, so we, we, we don't have a problem. As a city, we have a problem as a, as a country and, and, and going into conversations around what it would look like to not have a police department, to not want, to not have the NYPD, um, I think opens you up to conversations around why we have policing to begin with. Um, why is there crime? Why is there, uh, inequality that forces people into crime? So I, I personally am a champion of the goals of the defund the NYPD campaign. I think we need to accelerate the pace by which we, we allocate resources away from the NYPD and towards the critical and essential services that we need and that I think put people in situations where, um, they see crime as an option. And again, that's housing, that's food, that's economic opportunity and employment. We need to, you know, understand the underlying causes of crime and, and poverty, which is often treated as crime, to really deal with what we're, um, attacking here. So I, I, you know, applaud Carlos for, for putting himself out there and, and, and bucking the speaker and the mayor. I think we didn't have enough support from council members like him to do what we needed to do. Um, but my hope is that in the next year's budget, and even within this fiscal year, we really look at our bottom line and say like, you know, what do we need at this point? Do we need helicopters and officers with new cars and, uh, and, uh, you know, new bulletproof vests and shields to protect us? Or do we need to care for the homeless, to care for people that are hungry, to care for people that are facing eviction? Is that a better strategy to reducing crime? So I'm, 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 you know, I'm an advocate and, and, and proud, uh, defender of the, of the defund campaign and, and consider myself a prison and police, uh, abolitionist. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I think it's borderline criminal when the police department, it, in the budget, when you look specifically at the numbers, that they get more money from the budget than hospitals, schools, healthcare, um, and all these other things. And it's, I can't believe that that is such a big focus of the budget when we have all these needs that if you combine all, all, all the money that, that the NYPD gets, it's, it's just an astronomical number. Um, I think it's something in, in the six billion dollar mark. And when our schools are overcrowded or there's not enough supplies, um, that, that schools need, uh, whether it's, um, teachers, whether it's equipment, whether it's safety equipment, it's just borderline criminal. I just think that from a marketing standpoint, when people hear defund the police, it sounds really drastic and a lot of people get, um, get turned, turned off by, by that. But it's important to, to, I guess, make clear what, what exactly, um, is, is meant by, by terms like that. So you have other, you have other opponents in the race. Um, and let's, let's say hypothetically, if Rodrigo wasn't running, but the other candidate, yeah, the, the candidates that are running, who would you support if Rodrigo wasn't running?
Uh, I don't know. You know, that's a really good question. I, I think we're, we're lucky to have so many great, um, candidates running to succeed Carlos. I think it really speaks to this community and to the love that people have for the community. And, um, I, I think we're lucky. I think we have a lot of great leaders. And, um, for me, I don't know who I would, who I would choose if I wasn't running. But, um, the great thing is that we have ranked choice voting, so you'll be able to choose all of us. Uh, obviously choose me as number one, uh, on your ballot. Um, but I think, you know, ranked choice voting is a really great way to get us to not have to pick one. You know, we get to pick five candidates. So I, I really respect and admire and have worked with, um, everyone else that's running. And I, I'm really excited about the conversations that we're going to have as a community around our, our, you know, our needs and the, and the future that we want to build together. So I, I think it's a positive thing and I'm really, really happy that, um, there's so many great candidates out there.
Now, um, there was a, a question from someone in, in the audience. And, uh, they said they've seen you around at the different protests and they wanted to know how they can get involved in, in your campaign to help out.
What a great question. And that was not a plant. I just want everyone to know that. Thank you, uh, Melina Hernandez. Thank you. You can go to rodrigofornyc.com. Uh, that's a number four, nyc.com and get involved. There is a sign up there. You can, um, help volunteer, help host a fundraiser, uh, help us think about policy. And, and, and more importantly, just tell us about yourself and the issues that you're seeing in the community. So please, Melina, I want you on the team. Go to rodrigofornyc.com and get involved. And I'd love to talk to you about how you can help.
So Rodrigo, um, why, I, I know the election is, is a long ways, but why should, should we pick you over the other candidates? Why is Rodrigo Camarena best qualified to be our next council member?
You know, I think that I have the years of experience. I think I have the, the diversity of, 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 of issues that I've been exposed to, the work, um, to me speaks for itself, but you know, I'm going to have to fight for everyone's vote. I'm going to have to fight for everyone's support. And I want to make sure that I speak to as many people about why, what they see for themselves and how I can work to bring that to fruition. Uh, you know, my campaign is, the slogan is a New York for all of us. Um, and so when I think about me as a candidate, I really see everyone that's behind me as, as a real candidate and, and as, as the real heroes and what I think we're building together. So, um, I want everyone to know that my campaign is, is, is truly trying to represent every community in this district. It's trying to represent, uh, every age group, uh, every aspiration and every hope. We're building this community together. We're, we're building the city together. And I, I want you to join me in building a fair New York.
Thank you. So Rodrigo, uh, I want to thank you for taking the time to sit with us today to get to know a little bit more, um, about you and, uh, about your vision for, for the district. Um, and we wish you the best of luck in the campaign. I know the campaign is, is still a long way to go. We, there's still a lot more time and we, we would like to have you back as things progress, as issues come up. We're, we're gonna need to speak with you and, and, uh, and the other candidates to, to see how the, uh, campaign is going.
Please do. Thank you so much, Rob, for the time and the opportunity. Um, everyone, go to rodrigofornyc. Hit me up on Twitter, on Instagram, on Facebook. I want to learn about you and about your issues. Um, and I'm really excited to, to be here and to come back as many times as you'll have me, Rob. So thanks again for the opportunity and the space. And thank you for, uh, what you're doing to keep the community informed and engaged. I, I really appreciate your, this podcast and what you're, um, putting out there. So thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, thank you everyone for tuning in. Um, if you haven't done so, please subscribe to the YouTube channel, uh, so you can stay up to date to, uh, all the latest videos. Uh, make sure you, uh, visit Rodrigo's, uh, website if you are interested in getting involved in his campaign. Uh, we'll be back next Monday with, um, Alex Aviles. All right. Thank you very much. Rodrigo, gracias.
Good luck. Bye, everyone.